All right, I'd like to open for your private orders as always. You talk with the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to be the United States of America to the law.
I can't believe that.
All right, um, we, we're not, we're not there yet. We do have four, we do need to adopt the agenda. Before regular public comment, we do have a special page. Other than that, anybody else have anything we need to add to this? Uh, anybody?
Nope, you got it.
This is for the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Listen, please, that's for the discussion. Then and then on very three, five, six, nine. Um, I have a privilege today, um, recognizing our employees. Um, I'm supposed to, supposed to talk about COVID-19 for a while. I think you should start with when we were looking to employ. We hired John Shearer a couple of years ago now for a part-time position. And then we got COVID. Now, John Shearer is working fifty hours a week. Um, during the hiring process, we were looking for someone that would work with EMS, fire, dispatch, sheriff's office, BDM, health department, social services, everything. And it was a big concern that the person that we hired be too domineering and go in and kind of push people around. We wanted somebody that would bring all those groups together and get them to work perfectly. And we got John Shearer. Um, he also volunteered for fire company. Two, three, four o'clock in the morning, car crashes, fires, you name it. John Shearer for life first responder. This COVID, he is going far and above. Anybody else in that, can I? Um, say honestly, um, to give people protected and then all, and the supplies they need to be protected, and then also now getting shots into people's body. Um, last week, we had the first of our clinics all organized by John Shearer. He brought the schools, um, the pack extension, uh, dispatch with Brian, uh, who else? BDH was there, I mean, multiple different entities. My comments, all these, John, thank you so much. We know all these other people that partnered on and said, what can we do to help? And that's something that we expect in Madison, to be so seamless and easy. Um, this doesn't happen. And that's based on John's reputation. Um, everybody told about vaccine clinic last week. Thank John Shearer, thank John Shearer. And he is genuine. Um, he never is out in front of everybody. It's just John turned back, right before it's done. And that is something I know people do. Um, for a part-time job, John Shearer has done just great for that. John, come on up. Hobbs is calling this a vaccine field promotion. Um, I might overbat pandemic promotion. Um, thank you very much, John Shearer. They want to promote you to chief emergency services. Bag, turns out ordering bags is much harder than expected. Um, there'll be something like this. Um, also with that, we want to give you a quick phrase. Um, thank you very much for saying that. And I don't want to waste time. Anybody else like say something?
I was thinking, because I was definitely playing for him, John. And his comment, my colleague, well, you know, Madison County, everybody pulls together and all I had to do was ask and everybody stepped up. But I know it's more to it than that. Talking to his wife this weekend, she said, y'all may have only talked to him twenty-five hours, but he's putting in way more than twenty-five hours, which is beautiful. But John, you have my heart, so thanks, I think we made really good decision and I am, we want to keep you, so we don't want to make you work fifty hours a week. But thank you all.
Well, I appreciate it. Like you said, I, I still keep circling back. It, it really is, everybody goes in the same direction. I appreciate everything and I said all the kind of words.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yeah, the kudos are pouring in, John. I mean, I'm, I'm getting them left and right on the vaccine clinic last Wednesday. Um, it, it was seamless. Um, people were taken care of the second they drove onto the property. Uh, although you figure, I don't know how you picked Roger Barry and Gerald Carpenter and who else out there, but evidently that went pretty well. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, if, if it's appropriate, I, I would like to move that, um, John Shearer's title be changed to Chief of Emergency Services and have Mr. Hobbs, the county administrator, unnegotiate a pay raise.
Okay.
Listen, please, just further discuss. Here and down along the same folks, same line. All right. Um, John, I'm not going to go into the same thing as I did with Pelican. Uh, but, uh, our new face, man, I've been for a while, and he was only seven. Um, we would like to use our team down some time.
Aww.
How, John? Oh, you're the politician. You're holding back, come on now. I've done a lot of, a lot of work at that. Where is, there it is. And, uh, that's true. All right. Well, John may not have this, but I just came today recently, but apparently on Sunday, Tom Brady put in this super bowl a little later and he let you know, John Shearer. Um, all right. Now, regular public comment, regular public comment. I'll go. Yeah, we're looking at.
Okay, this is an article from USA Today. And it's about public education. Rich Governor Ralph Northam said Friday that all schools in the state should make in-person instruction available, at least as an option next month, noting the pandemic's steep toll on children and family. Northam said all K through twelve school divisions should make the option available by March. If I was in that, if I was the school board, I wouldn't be handing out pay raises yet because I think Northam was also thinking making school mandatory through the summer. And I hope these school teachers, I have an acquaintance down south, he had a hundred and fifty vaccine businesses available. He offered them to the school systems. Not one teacher volunteered for that vaccine shop. So he gave them to the judiciars and they just, not sold out, they went by. You can't believe. So I don't know what goes on with school teachers, their unions, but if these Catholics in Boston and Chicago, they can open up schools and we're talking tens of thousands. It's not gonna get long. Hope you do. There are two items of equal importance. First is every day I go to Hope Ever, try to recap for the youth. They have some wonderful parks there and enjoy walking in them very much. I tried to do the same thing at Uber Ridge. Folks, I gotta tell you, that's not a park, but there's a potential there that I think you guys owed in the community to explore with some seriousness. Secondly, I don't think that's so much to do with supervisors, but I want to throw it out anyway. Intersection of Fishback Road and Twenty-Nine screams for a traffic circle. Or you might want to consider discussing that with the VDOT folks next time we talk about it. Thank you.
Right? Other public comment? Yes, sir.
Chairman Jackson.
Would you mind coming up here?
Chairman Jackson, Mr. Yell, members of the board. You knew I wasn't going to go away with this bridge thing, so we're back. Um, and I appreciate your allowing me to speak today. I presented a copy, Renee and also Scott Ely, about a proposal that we have regarding the Kriegler'sville Bridges. And I just would like to read this so that everybody can hear it and it goes on record. Dear Madison County Board of Supervisors, as you know from our previous presentations, the Kriegler'sville Swinging Bridges are vitally important to almost every activity and business in this rural community, as well as to mountain county, Madison County residents and tourism. Hence, we read the report and cost estimates for rehabilitation of the Kriegler'sville Lindsay Lane Bridge provided by VDOT and Miss Shepherd with interest. As an alternative to this analysis, we would like to offer the following proposal. We will form an association whose mission is to repair and reopen the closed Kriegler'sville Bridge as soon as possible. The association will consist of a project engineer and several members who will take responsibility for bringing the project to completion. Professor Dana Elsie, the consultant that inspected the bridge and provided a cost estimate for repair previously presented to the board, is willing to oversee the project and be responsible for repairing the bridge. Professor Elsie has offered to supervise the project for free or for a modest fee if the board feels that is necessary to make the commitment legitimate. I would, I'd just like to add personally that Dana Elsie is not just someone we randomly contacted. I've worked with Dana for thirty years at UVA in Engineering School, and so I know him quite well. He's, um, I respect his judgment and his expertise without doubt. The association will raise all the money and repair the bridge to VDOT satisfaction under the supervision of Professor Elsie's direction. Funds will be raised from a variety of sources, such as individual donors and businesses, a GoFundMe campaign, an efficient email list with over a thousand signatures, et cetera. We anticipate the project to cost about fifteen thousand dollars, mostly materials, and already have approximately four thousand dollars of this promise from individual lead donors. We request permission from the board to execute the project and to obtain permission from VDOT to do so. To ensure that there's no misappropriation of funds, all money raised and all in-kind contributions, such as materials, will be documented, and in the case of money held in a bank account open for inspection at any time by a board of supervisor member or an appointee of their choosing. Any funds not spent will be held in the account for future repairs of the Kriegler'sville Bridges as outlined further below. This account will be open for inspection by the board at any time. In terms of liability, everyone who physically works on repairing the bridge from painting to welding to lane of cables, et cetera, will sign a waiver releasing Madison County and VDOT from any liability in terms of injury. In other words, every individual will assume responsibility for their own participation in the project. If the board and VDOT approve our plan, our next step will be to supply the board with a formal list of association members and duties, a timeline for completion of the project up to a pre-scheduled VDOT inspection to be coordinated with VDOT. All steps taken, including repair of the bridge, will be done with proper COVID-19 precautions or whatever the virus is at that time. Concurrent with repairing the Lindsay Lane Bridge, we will work toward a long-term solution for future repair and maintenance of the Kriegler'sville Swinging Bridges. This may include forming a foundation or LLC to oversee and manage maintenance and repair of the bridges, developing adjoining properties with landowners' permission and so forth. At a minimum, it will involve raising approximately five hundred dollars annually to maintain the bridges for at least the next ten years. Respectfully submitted, myself, my wife Renee Valfor, and Scott Ely. Thank you very much for your attention and consideration.
Thanks, Ms. Powell. Um, we're going to talk to VDOT here very shortly, and Miss Shepherd is on the phone, so we will bring this proposal in front of her very, very shortly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other public comment? Other public comment? All right, we'll get there. Um, first, we have a, a public hearing over renaming Malato Run to Pass Run. Yes, ma'am, would you like to fill us in on, or? Do the full background real quick.
All right. Um, I'm Becky Thompson of Oak Park, and I'm on a committee of Madison Equality Project looking into the renaming of Malato Run. And we found out from the Historical Society and from Carol Nash, a professor at JMU, that the original name was Pass Run, which dates from the seventeen thirty-three land grants, it's in the Dewey Lillard book in the library, that this was the original name when Andrew Gar settled around Gar Mountain. Sometime around eighteen forty-two, the land grant book says the name was changed to Malato Run. And we feel that the name Malato doesn't represent what Madison County stands for right now anymore, and we'd like to see the name changed. And so, I understand that this is the opportunity for the public to comment. I know you've received a lot of letters. Um, I have an additional statement to make, but I think, you know, if anybody else is here, we could hear from them.
Right. Hobbs, do you have anything you want to say?
Uh, we have extended course on a new package, um, I believe, whether or not. Also, I'm sure that the board wanted to, uh, approve, but Ms. Thompson's asked, will we prepare a resolution for this matter on this night? So the next thing to do is to help the actual board.
Um, we do have a resolution in front of us, Revolution Twenty-Two That Three. Yeah, got it wrong. Twenty Twenty-One That Three. Um, and that's the change of Malato Run to Pass Run. Um, I'd like to open the public hearing. Right, to the ball. To the ball. Um, all right, we're going to start.
I would like to speak.
Yes, ma'am, it's, is this, Ms. Smith, hold on one second. Good.
All right.
Uh, my name is Mike Fisher from Uno, Virginia. Uh, Malato Run, the name absolutely should be changed, no question. I was in the army for a long time and that word wouldn't have been tolerated. My problem is, I'm not sure how long the other creek that's been changed in Madison County, Negro Run, has been changed, but when you look it up on my little handy telephone, it comes up as Negro Run. So I'm not sure what good we're doing. That's all we're going to do, we could just take the signs down on two thirty-one and accomplish the same. When you look up Robinson River, the name Negro Run comes up again. My point is, if we're going to do this, let's get rid of the name and also go back and maybe circle around and get rid of Negro Run. Thank you.
I do believe we passed a resolution, we look back on that stream, um, if I need to reach back out to the name, what's the name that we're?
The Board on Geographic.
Um, Ms. Smith is on the go-to meeting page. Um, Ms. Smith, please.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, and good afternoon, everyone. I'm Carolyn Smith, I live on Ailer Road and Malato Run cuts right through my hayfield, so I see it every day. Um, I, I think this is mostly a, a matter of people not wanting to change something that they're used to and that they're familiar with. Um, I, I understand that real well, I'm having a hard time getting used to MWP changing its name, but I don't think that that's a good reason not to change a name. And I think we've got two good reasons to change the name of Malato Run. One is that it is offensive, it is outdated, it relates to a slaveholding period of this nation's history when a person's race or mixture of races determined what rights they had or didn't have. Um, and it also, it casts, it casts our county and our state frankly in a bad light. I've had people come from out of state to visit, and when we cross the bridge on two thirty-one, which is right near my road, th- they can't believe it. And they, and they make comments such as, what century does Virginia think we're living in? Um, I just had a friend yesterday in London who looked up my property on Google Earth because he wanted to see the location I lived in, and he saw Malato Run cutting through my hayfield, and he sent me an email right away and said, why is a place named like that still attached to a creek being used in this day and age? It makes Virginia look backward. So that's one reason. The second reason is we've got a perfectly good historical original name, Pass Run, and I just don't see any reason not to go back to the original name. People who, who are in favor of observing our history and honoring our history, that, that's a good way we can do it. Go back to the original name that was in use for, as, as I understand it, at least a hundred years before it was changed. So I see no good reason not to change it and two good reasons to change Malato Run to Pass Run. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
If I may, I would like to speak.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Smith.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for the time that you've taken to be at this meeting and the work that has been done thus far to move this process forward. I have some comments that I've written that I would like to read simply because there is some detail here and I want to make sure that I get it right. So if you would allow me, I would like to do that. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am, please proceed.
Thank you. I have to ask my students that all the time, sometimes I don't think they're listening. Not that you all aren't listening, just, you know, I'm on Zoom all the time. Mr. Dewey Lillard's deed research identifies the earliest recorded name for the stream, now called Malato Run, as Pass Run in seventeen thirty-three. It was described in the John Carpenter Land Grant, the name Pass Run is associated with the settlement of the Germana Colony along the Robinson River. It is likely that the Pass Run name comes from the headwaters of the stream near the saddle of Oot Hightop, which was a pass across Lakey Ridge into the Rapidan River Valley. Malato has a long history of referring to mixed-race persons or communities, and in the United States was commonly used to describe mixed-race children born into slavery. In Virginia, the General Assembly created the legal category in seventeen eighty-five. The name Malato does not appear on the early maps or geographic descriptions of the county. For example, it is not on John Wood's eighteen twenty-one map of the county. Martin's eighteen thirty-five Gazetteer of Virginia describes several bold, fine springs on the east side of German Ridge that are the headwaters of White Oak Run, but there is no mention of other named streams in the vicinity. The US government added Malato as a census category in eighteen fifty and used it until nineteen hundred. Our work with historic maps found that the name Malato Run first appeared on maps during this period, beginning with Civil War-era maps drawn by both Union and Confederate cartographers. It appeared on the eighteen seventy-five map of the county. The earliest USGS topographic map that displays the name is from nineteen thirty. It has appeared on every topographic map since. According to the US Board on Geographic Names database, currently twelve features and places in the United States that retain Malato, and with the exception of one in New Mexico, they are all in the South. Malato Run is the only one in Virginia. The discussion you're having today is taking place around the country. For example, there are seven hundred and sixty-six named features and places that retain Negro, and there are actions underway to change many of these names. And just to reply to one of the previous comments, Negro Run, the name has been changed in the database, it takes a while for Google and other map services to catch up. So hopefully that will be taken care of. So why are these names on maps and signs? They reflect racial categories that were imposed on communities. These are the names that were recorded by mapmakers who talked with local residents. Figuring out how Malato became associated with this stream requires collaborative research and work in oral tradition. I have heard a range of answers. Malato referring to the color of the water as similar to the color of mixed-race skin, or referring to a possible early black community in the Pass Run Valley. It is very common in central and western Virginia to find racial place names from the nineteenth century that are tied to black communities as a way of separating them. For example, we did research in northern Rockbridge County on a community known as Smoky Row. According to locals, the name had a double meaning, both a reference to the wood-burning stoves of the cabins in the small hollow and the color of the skin of the people who lived there. There is power in naming. When we name a stream or a place, we are memorializing and remembering. We are asking people to recall history. When we name though, we are not merely sharing memories, we are reinforcing the decisions of those who determine what is remembered. Naming impacts members of the community. When we see the Malato Run sign or on maps, what are we remembering? What does the name represent? It represents a time when people were forced into categories they themselves did not choose, categories that separated and discriminated. To continue to use such a name does not honor them or the place. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Um, listen, we sure that there's no sound on the radio, like.
Really? You two, you two, you two, Daniel, right there.
Oh, well, then.
Here's a comment over here. Any else, somebody's hearing it.
Ah, good.
Uh, dear Madison Board of Supervisors.
Who is this?
Says Gabrielle Masil, M-A-S-I-L-L. Dear Madison Board of Supervisors, please send me to the name of Malato Run is.
Madison Board of Supervisors, please send me to the name of Mulatto Run. Is that dated or offensive? Thank you.
There you go.
Somebody's hearing it.
You get that in front of. Ms. Brogan, are you wanting to speak?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to briefly say that I support the statements of Carol Nash and Carolyn Smith and I'm 100% in favor of the name change. Thank you for having this hearing.
Anybody else like to speak on that? Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
I'm out of breath. I was trying to join by go-to meeting, but even though I checked it out earlier, it simply wasn't working. So I'll try to keep my remarks brief. First, Mr. Chairman, Board Members and Administrator Hobbs, thank you for the opportunity to address the board. I am going to present a different opinion than what has been heard so far and I will be straightforward about that. But I have, I'm sorry, I'm Jane Dalton. I live in Madison. Right. I have three concerns about the decision, the wisdom of changing the name of Mulatto Run. The first is, I think the process was flawed. With all due respect to the board, the letters to the landowners and to the churches presented only one side of the issue and only asked for written responses in favor of the change. This produced a chilling effect on members of the community who may have had a different opinion and believed that the decision was a foregone conclusion and contrary opinions were not welcome. And I have heard people say that, that they believe that there was no sense in making a comment because it was just a waste of time. After I questioned this bias in the letters, the administrator did change the letters to the civic groups, but the damage had already been done. The board, I believe, does not have a fair reading of the community as a whole on this issue. And not everyone is able to come in person or, as I just was experienced, not able to come through through hookups. I mean, we live in a rural community. Our members are elderly. They have health issues with the COVID thing. I mean, I don't think we're getting a complete sense of the entire community on the issue. I think the precedent is also somewhat flimsy because there's absolutely no evidence that the name, you know, we've heard these speculations about what the name might have meant, but there's no evidence that it was chosen for a racist or a pejorative reason. The only evidence in the record is the speculation that it might have been a description as to the color of the water and many dictionaries say that the word, when used as an adjective, means tawny, tan, or light brown. Further, only recently have dictionaries characterized the word Mulatto as offensive. There are certain online dictionaries today say offensive, maybe offensive, sometimes considered offensive. But many dictionaries, even as recently as 2014, simply describe the word dispassionately and in objective terms to say that it denotes a person of mixed ancestry, very similar in tone and content to the definitions that the dictionaries give from Esteso and Creole, also denoting people of mixed ancestry. Several dictionaries make it very clear that certain words, like the N-word, are offensive and rightly so. But many of these dictionaries up as recently as 2014 do not mention anything about the word being offensive. And third, I think the policy is faulty. In the 18 years my husband and I have lived here in Madison County since we bought our house here, I have seen nothing but respect, friendly, caring relationships between all of the people in this community. If there are problems in our community, then by all means, I think those problems should be addressed. But any such problems, I think, will not be addressed by superficial gestures in name or form rather than substance. I'm mindful of the biblical command to love my neighbor as myself, but I ask, what does that mean in this context? The term in question is archaic and outdated. There's no doubt about that. The proposal seems relatively benign, although we lack important information that would inform our opinion on that matter. But there are neighbors in our community who are not in favor of changing the name, some of whom who have not expressed an opinion because of the process, as I mentioned earlier, and some whose opinion may have been based on simply the one-sided information that was presented in the letters. And we also don't know what other proposals there may be coming down the line. So I would recommend that this proposal be tabled and that we hold a referendum at the next regularly scheduled election in which all the citizens, all my neighbors in Madison County would have an opportunity to express their opinion on this and other proposals that may arise. All my neighbors in the county would be treated equally and with respect and everyone would have an opportunity to be heard. And thank you for the opportunity and I apologize for being out of breath and running up here. Thank you very much.
I see some unmuted lines on the go-to meeting. Anybody else on the go-to meeting wanna speak on that? Don't be bad. While they're thinking about it, we do have letters in support of the name change from Max Lacy and Martha Breeden from the Madison County Historical Society. We have a letter supporting the change from Alvin. We have a letter from Anita Marktonow supporting the change. Carolyn Smith, who we are, I believe we already heard from. Pass Run. Elizabeth Jacobson Seed, change it. Here's one from Cameron from Ali Boyd. It's a saying, she doesn't support either of them, it looks like. Jackie Sue Powell wanted to change the name. Don Hawkins wants to leave that she is. Kim Porstperson. She wants to change it, it looks like. Melissa Loos. She wants to change it. Is that she is?
No, no, no.
Marie Reagan from Syria, change it. Melissa Loos, again, good. Melinda Needle supports it. Ollie Kitchen. Doesn't have any problem changing it. Rat Goings. Looks like he is against changing it. Gerald Kirby or Jerry Kirby, excuse me. She would like to rename it. And letters, all those to be added into public records. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I'll be really fast. Can I just stand here? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Cindy Taylor. I live in Madison County out in Wolf Town. And I and my family are very much in support of this name change. And I also wanted to mention that I am Secretary of the Culpeper NAACP, also representing Madison and Rappahannock Counties. And while I cannot speak officially for the branch, because we haven't voted on it, I can say that many of our members have expressed, me and our president, their concern about this, their advocacy for this change. And they would not in any way consider this to be a superficial gesture. Thank you. No, and if you, if it would be, if you don't decide tonight, and I hope you do, if it would be helpful to have a more official stance from the NAACP, we'd be happy to provide that. Thanks.
Well, I think everybody can hear me. Yeah, it's because of this. I can't hear me. This is a, I don't know what you'll make of this comment. I have in my home, a helmet that was brought back from World War II by a veteran, given to me. It's a German helmet. It has SS markings on it. I'm probably more familiar with those people than most. Somebody said to me one day, why in God's name do you still have that thing? My answer is, I see it every day when I go into my office. And I really want to remember those bastards. I want to remember what happened. I don't want history to be lost, misinterpreted, or simply brushed away. Whether these comments are appropriate to this meeting or not, I really don't know. History is history. You know, you really can't forget it and you shouldn't.
All right. Other public comment? Anybody else? Anybody else on the go-to meeting platform or DMO or what have you been doing here? You haven't fixed YouTube yet, I'm sorry.
I don't think it's gonna be fixed. Well, I'll upload the video tomorrow to YouTube. Because it is going to DMO. Whoever's not hearing it, I don't know why.
Anybody else? All right, public hearing is closed. What?
I really wasn't gonna say it. My husband is in a store in Madison County. He probably has as much knowledge of the county and the history as most anyone left to provide him. His grandparents are great. When Mulatto Run was named there, it was because of money. And there were very few, there were none known. People lived in that area. So it wasn't an offensive name. So I just thought I could put that in there. You can't change this. And if it wasn't, you know, it wasn't. It was not offensive then.
We all want to do. We do have a resolution in front of us. Ironically, right in this coming up. My girlfriend gave me the map. It's the land grant from 1748. There's Pass Run on it. We all want to.
Yeah, I tell you, Mr. Chairman, I've been, you know, I'm a Madisonian. My grandparents lived in Etlin right before you cross into Rappahannock. So I've been making that trip my entire life and I can remember sitting in the backseat of the car as an eight-year-old and seeing Mulatto Run sign and not feeling right about it. As an eight-year-old, I remember this distinctly. So I'm very much in favor of changing it back to its original name of Pass Run.
Yeah, and I feel that if this happens, anyone, you know, we are here to protect the citizens, so I'm in favor of changing it as well.
So I wasn't as bright a kid as Cardi. So my assumptions were more in line with Ms. Hoffman's recollection of what that was about. Maybe I'm just naive. But it was my wife-to-be who first made me aware that, you know, what are you, what are you, what are you people doing? She was, she has roots in Charlottesville and Lynchburg and Alexandria, but she came to us from all over the world as an army brat, but more exposed, obviously, than I was. She's helped me to see the light in many ways and one of them was the Mulatto Run, and I had no idea. And I'm sorry, we haven't done anything before now, but I I believe because of what it has evolved to in terms of being offensive term, then I also will support the resolution.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution 2021-3.
Second.
Motion made. Second, further discussion. Here's your long paper, 6500.
Hi.
Thank you all for coming and speaking up. Now we're gonna go to Jane Bowling Wilson from Northern Piedmont Community Foundation.
She might, we might. My name is Jane Bowling Wilson and I'm the Executive Director for Paul Jordan's Community Foundation. And there's so much confusion about what we do and who we are that I am going to my four counties that I serve and asking to speak to all the Board of Supervisors and town councils and mayors and various people to sort of clear up who we are and what we do. So that is why I'm here. I want to thank you immensely for allowing me. It's an honor to speak to you and take your valuable time. Northern Piedmont refers to a geographic region. And the geographic region that we serve is Culpeper, Madison, Rappahannock, and Potters Park. And every community foundation serves a geographic region. And so that's the name Northern Piedmont. Many people, you know, they don't know what we do, but our name is confusing too. Is it Northern Community Foundation Piedmont? So it is confusing. So I think about Northern Piedmont is the region that we serve. There are 800 community foundations in the United States. And they started in 1916 when a group of business people got together in Cleveland and said, the cities, the towns, the counties, they just can't do it all. What we need to do is to create a group of people who care about their community, who want to put resources together to solve problems. And so, community foundations actually started as banks. What they did is they managed assets for people that they then put back into the communities that they serve. So that is essentially what we do. And I love having a chalkboard. I don't have a chalkboard, but I use both sides of the chalkboard. Because on the one side, we manage funds. That's our business. And we manage funds just like investment companies manage funds. We have five different kinds of funds that we manage that do different things for different people. And those funds, the resources in those funds are pooled together so that for investment, if you had a fund with $10,000 and you had a fund with $100,000, it's all pooled together so the return on that investment tends to be greater. So on the one hand, our business is to manage funds. We manage 120 funds in our four counties. As of August, we were, well, today's total is 20, we managed 24 million in funds for the four counties. I started six years ago. I've lived in neighboring Rappahannock County. I've lived there 40 years. I don't know why. I have worked in Madison, worked in Madison for 10 years. I started my career as an educator and now I am in what they call a nonprofit sector. So on the one hand, we manage these funds that are pooled together for greater resources. And then on the other side, I equate it a little bit like Robin Hood, except that we don't steal the money. The money's there. On the other side, we put the money back into the communities. And we do that by awarding grants to our funds. If you have a fund with us, you can say, I want to give to the literacy council, I want to give to the library, and I want to give to the skyline cap. And we make it happen from your fund. The benefit of setting up a fund is also, folks that do this get a 60% adjustment off their adjusted gross income. So it is, there is a great tax advantage for setting up funds that then have a charitable purpose. So we manage these 120 funds and our donors will contact us and say, I'd like to give to certain organizations. We also run five community grant cycles where we open grants to the nonprofit, to the community and say, graces right in that, well, I won't do that one. That's not a good example, but we just had in December, the Richard Likes grant in Rappahannock County. And Richard Likes was a retiree in Rappahannock County and died and left the state to Northern Piedmont. So every year from his fund, we put out about $70,000 to the nonprofits in Rappahannock County. So this year, we have distributed about 200,000. So this year, we have distributed about 2.2 million in grants in our four counties. Madison is by far and large the hardest nut in practice because you're small, you're as rural as Rappahannock. The folks who are affluent typically are set at home people. And so I'm knocking on doors in DC because they live out here part-time. But I want them, you know, to know that we're here and we can help. What we do, donor grants, we do community grants. We also run a fairly robust scholarship program. We did disperse about 286,000 in scholarships last year. We did have three Madison scholarships, which I'm pretty excited about because, you know, it's baby steps in the business. So you start with something small, and you grow and you build. Three years ago, my Madison County Board members, we got together and we said, "We got to, we got to figure this out." And so we created something called the Madison County Community Fund. We had a little party. We asked folks if they wanted to put some money in our Madison County Community Fund. And we started. And so today, what we're hoping with the Madison County Community Fund is that in ten years, that that fund is large enough that we can open a grant cycle exclusively for Madison County. I have grants in all four of my counties, but I do not have a community grant in Madison, and I want one. I am determined, before I leave, to get a nice little pot of money just for Madison so that Madison nonprofits have the same benefits as Rappahannock, Culpeper, and Foulkees. Our biggest base, obviously, or not obviously, is Foulkees County. It was where we were, our county members came from, and we have the most funds there and the most grants. So it is such a conundrum to have four different counties. So I can't do this. I gave you the question. Did I lose it? I think I did. Do I have, do I have five minutes?
Oh, sure.
I'm not going to read this, but this. We did, oops, I went wrong direction. Um.
No, the light, sorry.
So we are now at 120 funds. We did, I came in in 2015, and we were at 8.5 million. We're now at 25 million. So we have been experiencing some very nice growth, which is good. We did in March, and I was going to start my talk with a joke because everybody's so tired of COVID. And we have been working at home since March 13th. And one of the smartest things that I did was that weekend when they announced everybody had to stay home, I went to my board and said, "Can we create this fund that helps anybody who needs it because of COVID?" And they said, "Yes." And so today, we've put out 452,000 in the four counties. That fund is open to Madison and nonprofits and public entities can apply for any purpose related that is suffering because of COVID. So I'm pleased that we've been able to respond to all four counties for that. So we do network with lots of other groups, hospital foundations, and various groups in the community. Investments, I'm frequently asked about our investment details. We have a benchmark of 6.5% return on investment. There are years that we do much better than that, and then there are years that we don't do so well. Our investments are managed by three firms, one in Baltimore, Washington DC, and one in Culpeper. And they are overseen by a fairly extensive committee of investment professionals that look at everything through a microscope. These are our different kinds of funds. We have several organizational funds in Madison County where an organizational fund is the type of fund that you would say, "All right, Jane, we want to grow our assets. We're little, but we'd like to pool it with your 24 million so that we can grow assets a little stronger, then we don't have to oversee it." Our office does all the reporting. We issue quarterly reports. And so we take care of all the back office work on that. And we have several in Madison County, which is nice. Those are your different kinds of funds. These are our community partners. That's my next-door neighbor, Nanone, playing the trumpet. So these are our community grants. And, ooh, this is an old version. directions. Give local Piedmont. I didn't leave that out on purpose. Give local Piedmont. We have been the sponsor and facilitator for that. This is our eighth year. We have raised almost $6 million in seven years. Madison participates in this and does a great job. It is a one-day giving campaign. This year, it's May the 4th. We advertise, we hang banners, we knock on doors. And what happens is the nonprofits contact their donors and raise their visibility. So it's really more about finding out who's in the community, what they're doing, how they're accomplishing it, and what help do they need. There is something on our website that's called our Giving Guide. And it is on the homepage, if you go to it and click on it. And it gives you a really nice portfolio of nonprofits in our four counties by category, by location. And you can see what it is they do and go directly to their website. So this is the thing, raise the visibility for all nonprofits. And we get pretty excited about it. And there's Madison up there on the left. You've got Cardy. So this may or may not be of interest to you, but we are a nonprofit. And people, people are confused a little bit about nonprofits in that they assume the word nonprofit means, oh, you're not supposed to make a profit. You should struggle. You shouldn't have much of souring. There should be no benefits. Really, the only thing nonprofit means is your mission is different. Your mission is a goal. It is not just, "We got to make money." It is a goal that improves quality of life for others. It really is, whether it's animals, people, trees, all that. So how do you figure out what nonprofits contribute in Virginia? This is just information I find pretty interesting, that there are 30, close to 38,000 Virginia nonprofit organizations. And you can see the rest. It employs the nonprofit sector 233,000 in Virginia's workforce. Most of my numbers, I hesitated about including these, are 2018 numbers. So they're a little outdated. But the bottom paragraph there is how much Virginians give in terms of charity, 5.6 billion each year. So it's a major force in terms of employment, workforce, and then contributing to the community. So nonprofits are Virginia's third-largest employer. This is interesting, too. Look at Madison. When we first dug these numbers out, asset amount for Madison. And if you look at the income amount, and I, so I did some research because I said, "Why is Madison so high?" Look at Madison. Well, Woodbury Forest. Woodbury Forest is a nonprofit, 501(c)(3), and they have a huge endowment, which then sort of tips the scales a little bit in terms of why Madison. So that's it for me. I certainly thank you and applaud the work that you do here. I feel like we're neighbors, and I'm happy to hear from any of you at any time. And my COVID joke was this. So I've been working at home for about two months. I had my old office, and I redone it, and I'm upstairs in the office. And I got ready for bed one night, and I couldn't find my pajamas. And so I looked and looked and looked, and I, you know, usually put them under my pillow, and my pajamas were not under my pillow. So I finally said, "I just know where I'll t-shirt." So I went to my husband's drawer, and I got a t-shirt. And I took off my sweater, and there were my pajamas. I had never taken my pajamas. And that was the start of COVID working at home. But we got better, so. But thank you very much. I appreciate your time, and thanks.
I got two questions.
Okay, good. I hope more.
Two questions.
Yes, sir.
Who are the Madison Board members on your board now?
Well, Cardy Yow retired off our board three years ago. Jeff Early retired last year. Russell James is on our board.
Russell.
And he will be our chair, and he's from Madison, and he'll be our chair starting in June for a year. Valerie Gosens is still on our board, although she's moved out of the county. We're looking to replace her. And then Larry Christensen, lives in Madison, is a, runs a farm and has lots of various sticks in the fire, and he is on our board.
Okay, that's my first question. Second question, do you still have COVID funds available?
We do.
For Madison nonprofits?
We do.
Okay, thank you.
We do, and I, we just gave out four this week for COVID. It's called the Emergency Response Fund. And so you just, we made it as easy as we could. They sent me a letter. And then, so then we respond within a week, and then they get funds the next week. So that is still open. Lots of folks have contributed to it. We started that fund through one of our funds that we manage, but then lots of, we got lots of corporate donations. I was really excited about that. So, other questions?
Anybody else have any?
Yes, ma'am.
No, or you may not know right offhand, but according to your administrative costs.
Our administrative costs are about 2% of our overhead. So they are, our operating is under 300,000. We employ, when I started, we were one and a half people. We're now three. I am hoping to hire another person because I like to hire, I have some young people who are interns and part-time. So our overhead is under 300,000. About 256, I think it was last year. Yes, ma'am. Anybody else?
Anybody?
Anybody?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, moving forward, going to Carrie Shepherd. Can you give us quarterly report? Um. A couple moments on there. Shepherd?
Yes, good afternoon.
Yes, ma'am. Please proceed.
Okay. Work on sharing my screen.
Well, hold on.
Is there a permission that I needed to be given?
All right, I'll tell you, I'm going to do no internet. We really need to work on that.
Uh-huh. Yeah, he's a, he's a pepper user.
She's the presenter.
All right.
Okay, great.
Okay. There you go. Right.
Okay. Let me get, switch over to the slideshow view here.
All right, Miss Shepherd. Sorry, guys.
Okay, how's that?
Good. We're going with the canyon effect. All right, Miss Shepherd, let's do this.
Okay, all right. Well, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm here with you this afternoon to go over the VDOT quarterly report. So go ahead and get started. I'll start off with the preliminary engineering. At this time, I have no new updates from what I provided in the last meeting and also what's provided in my monthly meeting reports. So I will continue on. For our rural rustic routes, Forest Drive, the environmental review is complete. Scoping is currently being finalized. P Ridge Road, environmental clearance and scoping is currently underway this time. Also, over the next couple of months, we will be revisiting the secondary six-year plan and reviewing the rural rustic priorities for any changes or any additions that we want to consider. As far as construction activities are concerned, we are currently finalizing our schedule for a double-line pipe replacement for 641 Weaver Hollow Road. Working around the weather at this point in time. But we're hoping that once we can finalize our schedule, we can get this started soon. And bridge projects, you all are familiar with the Route 607 Repton Mills Road Bridge Replacement, which is a timberdeck, existing timberdeck bridge, which we will be replacing with a precast concrete slab. I appreciate your comments on this project. We did receive those. And so I just wanted to provide some follow-up points about those comments that were made. The bridge and superstructure will be designed to current standards and will be able to carry all legal loads. We will perform hydraulic and environmental reviews and obtain all the required permits. And our public relations group will work with emergency services and the school board and provide advanced public notification. We usually get message boards out in advance of a closure of this kind. And last, the board indicated, they asked if you could, if we could move the project schedule forward a month to avoid conflict with school bus traffic. Looking into this closely, we have a scheduling conflict with another bridge replacement. And we would still like to perform that work in August if possible. Our original duration that we provided was about four weeks, and we've determined that we can shorten that down to two weeks. So at this time, I'm looking for any input or concurrence from the county on this proposed shortened duration. And last, our traffic engineering updates. We completed a pedestrian signage and pavement marking review for Main Street in the town of Madison. The crosswalk striping and new pedestrian signs have been installed, as well as some parking delineation on the, on the southern end. Currently under review is Route 699 Lester Utes Lane. It's a speed study. This is in progress. We've had to work around the weather quite a bit to get the counters out there, but we did get them out there this week. Once we get that information in, should be this week as well, we can finalize the study and provide the recommendations for you to review. At this time, it is our thought, based on just field reviews, that the road is extremely narrow. And so we do feel like the speed data is going to come back supporting that requested 25 mile per hour speed. But again, we'll be able to finalize the study this week and let you know the recommendations. At this point, I'd like to pause and just get any general comments or concerns or issues before we jump into the curricular swinging bridges update.
Two, we're going to shepherd. And I believe it's in base.
I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing.
All right. Isn't it May or June that we use the county votes on?
Yes, that is correct. Yes.
A man, Terry Inbo, wanting, uh, requested that we put Walker's Mill Road on there for rural, rural rustic.
Okay.
Uh, rural rustic, so we just, a note on that. Um, and then the other one you brought up, that the town is, I understand is trying to reach out to you. Um, y'all have painted the crosswalks with just some white lines. I think they've asked a couple of times now if you can put some, uh, do some more paint down or something of that, whatever you people do, uh, to make them look more like crosswalks and not as much just like white lines across the road.
Okay.
They, they.
I had not heard that.
Several times now.
Okay.
Hav, what else am I missing on this? We, you talked about Lester Utes Lane, um, the Repton Mills, talked about that. Yeah. And we had somebody bring up earlier about, in this meeting, um, 29 and Bishback, if that would be a place that we could put a traffic circle. Um, that's just kind of a comment. Anybody else have any comments for Ms. Shepherd before she goes into the swinging bridge? Dilemma?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I have, I didn't know when it was appropriate time to bring it up, but my neighbor is up in Etlin on Emmett Road. They got a, got a three-quarter mile of the road that hasn't been paved and they're up there scraping it all the time. Uh, so whenever it's time to put that on, on the radar, I'd like to do that.
All right, so there, there's another one that we should.
Emmett Road.
Emmett Road. That we need to add, potentially add to the six-year road improvement plan. Got anything? All right. Let's move to the swinging bridges in Kriglarsville.
Okay. Okay, so, so I brought some updates, um, for you. We, we provided some, some refined estimates at the end of last week. I hope you've had a chance to review those, uh, but that's, that's what I'm mainly going to be discussing. So, so what we've provided are refined rehabilitation and repair by contract, rehabilitation, repair by state forces, and then, um, again, a summary of the, of the funding options.
What does, what does that mean by contract and by state force? Who's doing the work, I suppose. Did you hear that one, Ms. Shepherd?
Yeah, I did. That, that's exactly right. Um, a contract would be, would be likely administered by us, um, if that was the route chosen and, and then performed by hired equipment or contractor. State forces would be our own VDOT crews.
Thank you. All right.
So to begin, um, I've got, uh, the estimate for the rehabilitation and replacement by contract. Um, I'd like to point out that federal ID 11785 is the Lindsey Lane Bridge. Um, you can see there's rehabilitation, replacement, and then rehabilitation for 11819, which is the um, other bridge accessible by Old Blue Ridge Turnpike that is still open at this time. The rehabilitation of the Lindsey Lane Bridge, um, based on these estimates comes in at about $750,000. The replacement comes in, um, just under 1 million. Uh, the difference between, um, these two estimates is the replacement is considering replacement, um, in full, whereas the rehabilitation is leaving out the, or, or leaving in place the towers, um, and the foundation. So that's the only difference between those two. Otherwise, the rehabilitation is replacing, um, all other elements of that bridge. Um, I'd like to make note too, that these estimates are based on a three-foot-six-inch width across the bridge for pedestrian access. This matches in kind what's out there today. So it is not considering any ADA compliant features or, or elements in that regard. Um, of this, this, by contract, again, this, this is assuming, uh, VDOT administered project. I'd like to make note that the right-of-way cost is, um, is zero right now, um, because donated right-of-way is necessary for this replacement. Also like to make mention of the materials cost for the rehabilitation and replacement. As you can see, that, that's, that's fairly low, um, considering the total estimates. You can see the labor and equipment carries the most weight, um, in this estimate.
All right.
Next is the estimate for rehabilitation and replacement by state forces. Um, again, 11785 is the Lindsey Lane Bridge. We have rehabilitation and replacement. Um, and then rehabilitation estimate for the, um, Old Blue Ridge Turnpike Bridge that remains open. Um, the estimate for the rehabilitation by state forces comes in at about $440,000. The full replacement comes in about $620,000. Again, the only difference between these two estimates is that the rehabilitation is considering all elements of the bridge except for the towers and foundation and the replacement is considering, um, including the foundation and, and the towers as well in that estimate. Again, right-of-way costs are at zero, material costs, um, same as, as by contract. Um, also, you know, relatively low compared to the full estimate. Um, and again, this is for three-foot-six-inch width bridges, um, which is in kind to what's out there today. Also, no ADA compliant features included in this estimate. Um, and so state forces, uh, like we mentioned, that, that would be performed by VDOT crews. Um, but I would like to mention that we are, uh, as a district, responsible to maintain 1,700 bridges and structures. Um, and our, our current priority is to address structures ra, rated as structurally deficient likely presents a significant time delay in when, when our crews, our state forces, um, could get this work into our, our priority listing and get it scheduled up. Our preference would be to utilize the hired equipment, uh, managed by VDOT to perform the construction. Uh, it is higher than, you know, than by state forces, uh, but it does allow, uh, our, our state forces' bridge crews to continue with our current maintenance schedules to address, um, bridges that are in critical condition. Uh, but of course, we'll still work with the county to determine, um, a path forward, but our preference at this time would be through, through contractor. Um, I'd like to, to make mention here of how the cost that I've just gone over with you compared to the cost that we discussed back in October. Um, as you can see, I've got the, um, contract versus state forces estimate at the top for rehabilitation and replacement. Um, again, that's for a three-foot-six-inch width structure, no ADA compliance. And in comparison, um, with the original estimates from October, these are all just full replacements. Um, and also, you can see the difference in width, six feet and 10 feet, and then the, the trust, um, estimates as well, which also included, um, ADA compliant features. So that, that really is what accounts for the difference in the, in the cost estimates that, that we provided previously. And just last, as a reminder, just, just the funding options, wanted to go over that with you one more time. Transportation Alternatives Program, that, um, th, these bridges would be eligible for this program. It's 80% federally funded with a 20% local match. Um, the application period for this program is upcoming. It, it opens up May 15th and closes July 1. Um, and that's something that we can definitely help work through and, and, and get that application in place. Similar with revenue sharing, the difference with revenue sharing, is it a 50-50 match instead of the 80-20? Uh, but that is also another option, uh, for consideration. And then jumping down, um, the secondary six-year plan funds can be used as part of your 20% local match with the TAP program. So that's, that's another, um, item to consider. And that about wraps it up. Um, I'm open to discussion or any, any comments or questions at this time. Yes, I can end.
You want to start? Just for presented wealth or previously presented wealth?
Yeah, I got, oops. I got, Gary, can you hear me? This is Cardi Yao. Um, I got a couple of questions. First of all, um, so I, I assume VDOT has a donated right-of-way current.
Just for presented wealth or previously presented wealth?
Yeah, I got, I got. Gary, can you hear me? This is Cardi Yao. Um, I got a couple of questions. Uh, first of all, um, so I, I assume VDOT has a donated right-of-way current.
Yeah, you're not sounding that good either. Um. Oh, does that sound like play? I'm sorry. Now I can't take offense to that. Um. You're not sounding that good either. Um. I hear you. Uh, we still got her. We just got a lot of activity. Uh, Livingston, are you, you close to? Uh, we know. Cardi, go ahead and, Gary, talk to Carrie. Yeah, there you go. All right. So Carrie, I, I assume that VDOT has this donated right-of-way currently?
No, no, current, currently what we've discovered in our research is that we have a prescriptive easement, so we do not own prescriptive easement on the roads, but, but we actually don't own the property that the bridges are on.
Okay. All right, well, then I'm asking a lot of these questions. You were on and heard the proposal from, uh, some residents and business people of Kriglarsville area, right? You heard that proposal?
Yeah. Yes.
There's going to be a few things that they need. First of all, I guess, um. Does VDOT want out of these bridges? Or you guys don't care or you want out?
I mean, and I think from, from our standpoint, we'll, we'll do, um, however the county wishes to proceed is, is, is how, how we will agree to proceed. I mean, we'll, we'll try to work through some of the issues like the, the right-of-way donation, um, with you, but I think generally speaking, however the county, you know, wishes to proceed is, is how we're going to try to help make that, make that happen.
Right, but, but if VDOT's, if we were to proceed with a rehab or a replacement of the bridges, then you guys would have to commit to maintaining those on an ongoing basis. Is that uh, part of the plan if we were to go that way? See what I'm saying?
Yeah. Yes. I mean, when, when we worked to get, you know, the right-of-way situation sorted out, um, and decided the path forward that you wanted to go on the rehabilitation replacement, we would help work through those fun options and, and get that in place. And then, you know, essentially at that point, it would just, it would be, um, like it is now, one of our structures that, that we maintain. So, so yeah, it would follow the maintenance schedules.
Yeah. Yeah, so going forward, we, we would anticipate that VDOT would maintain them to to the level where they didn't need to be shut down ever again. That's what I'm getting at. That would be a commitment on y'all's part going forward.
Um, I mean, we, we would definitely perform, um, routine, regular maintenance to the best of our abilities. I, I think that, you know, there, there will be a lifespan, um, you know, just like we've, we've reached that lifespan now. But I mean, would definitely make sure during our, our review process that we were maintaining and keeping it up to, um, a certain level of standard, you know, definitely for safety purposes, um, but but it, yeah, I mean, it would be just based on, on our, our routine inspections.
Okay, uh, so is ADA compliance in play here?
As, in, in what regard?
I mean, so, uh, if it gets rehabbed or replaced, no, you said no, it wouldn't have an ADA. Is that right, Ms. Shepherd?
Oh, right, yes. So, so right, the estimates from October included ADA compliance, the, the most recent estimates is more of just replacing in kind, um, similar width and no ADA compliant features, which is just as it is today.
That's all legal.
Yeah, that's, that's my question, Cardi.
Yeah.
How are we, um, particularly if we're considering a replacement option? How are we getting around the ADA requirements? Whether VDOT does it by contract, VDOT does it by state forces, or we do it as a locally administered piece of work with the.
I believe because we're trying, um, you know, to work towards a solution and, um, you know, do something that's, that's feasible, that's reasonable, um, considering that it's been in place for so long without ADA compliant features. Um, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of thought in that regard that, that we're just trying to put back what was there. And, but I can follow up on that and, and try to determine, um, kind of specifics behind that. But I think it really has to do with the fact that it's, it's been in place for so long and we're trying to put it back, um, you know, in a reasonable manner.
Carrie, Carrie, this is David. What would happen there, um, is a design exception would have, have to be requested through the state bridges engineer. And while we would have to go through that process, we think we would, uh, get approval from him. But, uh, part of that, uh, exception request would be looking at ADA compliant issues and other things, uh, in order to get the exception.
Thank you, David.
Okay. Thank you. So, uh, Ms. Shepherd, I, I would like for you to, uh, comment if you could on, on the proposal that has been put in, in front of us from, from our, uh, local Madisonians in the Kriglarsville area.
Sure. I mean, I, I did, you know, receive that kind of late this afternoon, so we've, we've briefly discussed it internally, um, but um, it's definitely a path forward. It's definitely an opportunity to, you know, have a win-win situation. You know, we're, we're more than willing to, to continue those discussions with the county, um, and, and come up with a solution in that regard.
Or with the group that, that presented us with the proposal?
Oh, sure, yes. Yes, as, as, you know, as long as there's, is there's county involvement as well. We just, um, want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
All right, all right, um. They've made a proposal to us. They've obviously got right people in place. They've got Mr., uh, what is it, Thomas Goodwin Diggs, who is the professor, who is a director of Nano-Scale Materials Characterization Facility at the University of Virginia Department of Material Science and, and Science and Engineering. I mean, certainly with the title that long, he has to be qualified. Um, and what, can we pass this, pass this along to Mr. Howe, Renee Balfour, and Scott Eliff? And then this professor, um, to work with you and see if we can come up with some type of real solution to this that's not going to cost us 20% and maybe able to be funded from the private sector?
Sure, we're more than willing to participate in that, yes.
All right. Good. Um, how do we move forward from here, Ms. Shepherd?
Uh, I would, I would give us an opportunity to, uh, review the proposal, um, and then uh, likely a, a, a meeting will be needed after, um, we've had a chance to look through it, to discuss through, to discuss the details.
Is, is that something that could potentially be done within the next, I don't know, we meet again here in two weeks or something? Um, we could come back and maybe see where y'all are at in two weeks. It'll be on the 23rd of February when we meet again. Um, is there a way we could get kind of a synopsis for y'all's review at VDOT and potentially working with, uh, Mr. Howe?
Yeah, we can certainly try to make that happen.
All right, so both parties have each other's contact information. Mr. Howe, you got, Ms. Shepherd, okay. All right, so let's go down that page. Seems like a very realistic and reasonable type of direction to go. All right. So let's go down that page. Seems like a very realistic and reasonable type of direction to go. All right. Um, Mr. Howe, you send her an email or something and see if we can get the ball rolling here and maybe in two weeks, get everybody back on this, this technology and make sure we've got something that's gonna move forward at a faster rate than a couple of years.
Good. If Ms. Shepherd, the possum store would be a great place to meet.
Yeah, you can see her. Um, all right. Um. See if y'all can work it out. Two weeks, we meet on the 23rd at six o'clock. Look forward to hearing from everybody and kind of going from there.
Thank you, Mr. Howe, for all your hard work on this.
Anybody else got anything on this or Ms. Shepherd? I just wanna thank her. Uh, thank you, Ms. Shepherd, for supplying pretty much all the information we've asked for at this point, I think. Or, so, yeah. All right. Thank you, Ms. Shepherd.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Usual. Um, all right. Good Lord, we're out of special appearances. Um, consent agenda. We've got minutes from the 21st, 26th, 28th, 31st. And then the fourth, we've got invoices and bond to be invoices from bond proceeds. Um, at 298, eight, four, eight, eighty-four, thirty-four with no TAF bill. Um, that pertains to the, uh, primary school renovation. Um, you got the Electoral Board's Cares Act funding true up. Emergency communication, next gen true up, insurance recoveries, um, and reclassifying the more building rent to debt as it needs to be. Um. What do you all wanna do?
Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't know, remember which one. Jackman can probably tell me. I was late for one of them, but I.
He can still vote if he's late.
Yeah.
All right.
If I can do that, I would move to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, particular five of a same eye?
Aye.
I post same sign. All right. Um. Um, Ms. Fromm. We've got somebody. Pretty good. Will. So we'll work on those two. Um, and they're not really that active. I mean, genuinely not very active. Um, thankfully. We do have a applicant for the CSP board, Misha Jones. Um, and we've, uh, got her application. Do you know? Misha Jones. Um. In light of our recently resolved legal issues, um, let's do an interview. Go and do an interview. Um, what about if we were to do an interview after our meeting on the 23rd, Hobbs? Um, it starts to, where, where we start? Six o'clock? What? Starting closed session? Yeah, we can do that. It shouldn't take very long. You didn't have to strike anybody down or chase them or anything? Um, so, all right. So you're gonna get in touch with Misha Jones and we're gonna interview her first thing at the meeting on the 23rd. Hobbs, you got anything on this? Yeah, Mr. Graves. Mr. Graves says that he will continue to serve on the IDA board. And that's a four-year appointment? All right. Well, there you go. Um, all right.
That's not me.
No, it's not. We know. We got qualified, good people here. Um, y'all wanna go ahead and put Mr. Graves back on the IDA? All right. What's pleasure of the board?
Jimmy, right?
This is Jimmy. Yes.
I move to reappoint Jimmy Graves to the IDA board for another four-year term.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signal five of a same eye?
Aye.
I post same sign. You gonna call him and congratulate him? Thank you, Ms. Fromm. Um, all right. Let's, uh, we've got, uh, constitutional office, county departments, committees and organizations. Mike Moscow, you're pretty close. What's planning commission doing?
That Mr. Webb recommended. We are also looking at the removal of one thing relative to political signs in the sign ordinance. I think it's Article 12. Uh, we also looking at redoing and updating the wireless communication facility ordinance, which is probably a good idea since that might become important in the broadband issue. Uh, that pretty well sums it up, uh, for what we're doing on the planning commission.
Nathan, you got anything to add? That's the way to be.
You're gonna be reporting all, everything that goes on here tonight at our next meeting.
Um, all right. Ron. All right. Uh, Noah. Um, John.
Uh, real quick, just a few to run down. We had our first vaccination thing. If you know, if you know, there are 113 people. We're gonna try to go the next three Wednesdays. They're gonna be varying in different sizes based on supply. 108 people are already signed up for tomorrow. We got the next. Um, the federal pharmacy partnership's gonna be going into service, uh, later on this week, Thursday, Friday. So I really don't know how that's gonna affect our operation, 'cause people are gonna be able to go take ones with Walgreens and CVS and all that stuff. They can, I'm not really sure how that's gonna, gonna shake out. Um, just moving forward with the vaccination, we're gonna try to keep up our, uh, ongoing outreach efforts to get people who don't have online access. Um, and try to get those people vaccinated. That's it. Monday, uh, I'm gonna stay called just before I got here. It looks like Phase 1D, uh, according to the state folks, we'll go early in March and probably.
John, how many people on Monday you cited it? Um, how many people have gotten the first round in Madison and then how many are fully vaccinated as of Monday?
Let's see. Seventeen hundred and twenty-nine people in Madison, in Texas, and, uh, 238 folks.
Right. Um. That's, that is good percentages based on our population.
Yeah.
Um, that mobilizing is, and I'm hearing across the state, um, that other places are having massive problems. I just want more getting shots in arms. Um, the big push right now, and I saw Brian shared it earlier and everybody's talking about it. If you, and I got a very, very odd, uh, comment earlier this week from somebody that is on social media and is on email and reads, reads the newspaper and everything, um, that didn't know how to, uh, register to get the shot. So I pointed her towards the RRHD, uh, dot org website to register and then also gave her the number for the hotline here in Madison. Um. If you know people that do not have internet coverage or that possibly are just kind of out of the loop, um, please reach out to them. Um, Mr. Dotson from EMS, he, he offered, um, yesterday to start trying to work, go house to house up in the Syria and Eupen region, which we appreciate tremendously. John, go ahead.
I have flowers printed up. Uh, I handed out a bunch to the sheriff today. He's gonna have some to get and put them out. Just kind of amped area and when we can to get, get the message out there. Also, I promise, I should have mentioned our hotline if we did set up. Uh, just today, they've taken, uh, 1,200 second calls.
Wow.
The.
So you got some interns working on that? It's just real beneficial to have us people, uh, you know, a voice on the other end rather than just keep hitting keys and leaving messages. Um, I think it really gets a long way. You got to be talking.
Absolutely. Um, yeah, the, the, the question at this point, which has been posed a couple of times, is whether or not we do one of these. What do they call that? What's a phone call? What do you call that? Hyper reach. And that basically hits every phone number in Madison County. At this point, we're, we're kind of saving that, um, for truly emergency purposes. Um, and the comment that's come out is like John has said already is, uh, Brad Garbs' shop up there with the hotline is continuously getting phone calls. When those phone calls stop and we potentially have a significant portion of the population that still is not, then maybe we'll go down that path. But while those phone numbers and while we can continue to get, we heard about, uh, Joe May, I think, or somebody said something about, uh, a surrounding jurisdiction that couldn't get needles in people's arms. Um, in Madison, we're not having that issue. Until we get to that point, we're not gonna go down that path, uh, and save that for just solely emergencies. Tell your friends though, please, and get them to register. Nobody likes these masks.
And just wanna recognize that if we help our hospitals instrumental in helping us with vaccines, we can't order this on Amazon. They are, uh, they are truly the ones that are helping us.
Thank you. Uh, John, I'm sorry. Please, please go ahead. So would Food Lion let you put a few of those?
You know, I haven't really approached them. I'm sure most places.
All right. I'm thinking we should get Food Lion, Co-op, some of these places. Gelli probably would let us put one on their door.
We've got those offices.
Yeah. Tran- transfer station. Roger, you get something out there potentially? Don't do that. Put it, uh, near the gatehouse. Put it somewhere out there.
It is on the line, uh, so if you find it, it comes out.
Um, grab a couple. Check them out if they, if they, get it done. Uh, Roger?
Yeah, I'm gonna be in D and O. John did it that one time. We got snow coming, let everybody know. So we don't know what the rest of the big. We're gonna work all these days. They keep stay open.
We've gotten fortunate with not much snow, but Roger and his people get out there so fast. I mean, you get, come in here, all sidewalks are done, parking lots are done. Since way too good. Um, you got anything for Roger?
Oh, another thing, John didn't have any shots left over. I have to say, if they, what they did was fifty shots left over. We got them right down to the last shot. We had somebody sitting in the locker waiting for the last. It was, it was good for me.
Yes, sir. Um. I really wanna call on you, Mike Fisher.
I do have, uh, one thing to our region. We have, we had a Bergen Legion meeting in the Rock in Houston. So we, we have 150 members and we put them to their families to our website and make some phone calls. Had to do this and where the rest. So that is, uh, that is VA of Crevelsville is supposed to be giving veterans shots. But I haven't been contacted, although a couple of people we knew know say they have been. So I don't, I don't know the details. I waited 45 minutes to get the doctor written, and she hasn't really helped me much. But said that they were supposed to be reaching out to Veterans Administration, reaching out and giving veterans shots.
I don't know. Um, all right. Um, all right. Um, we do have, uh, Tracy, you have anything to add to this?
Yes. Um, congratulations to John Share and thanks for all his work and everybody's work. Uh, we lost Betty Mitchell. We had a volunteer for the visitor center for over 20 years on the first. So it was a very sad week. Um, on a good note, the Health and Wellness Medical Services changed their grand opening to March 20th. And I can finally announce that you probably already know Orange Madison Family Physicians is coming where Wellsprings was. Those are the main things I had to point out. Um, Crafting a New Normal had a webinar on GIC compliant for websites. And I highly recommend it for any business, not just the crafting industry. And that's just, you can find it on craftinganeynormal.com. That's all I have right now.
All right. Um, Ms. Murray? Livingston, what's going on in your shop? No, everything's doing good. Use the microphone, Livingston.
That's what I did to Mr. Mike. That's the worst thing I could. But do people do send me messages and say that they cannot hear the meetings if folks are not talking into the microphone? But anyway, um, we got the data ready. As you go down here to 410 building, we're waiting on the construction people to give us to go ahead to hook up and link up these two buildings, the fiber and everything, and the, we're just ready to go. Uh, we, we paid the person, uh, the company that's gonna come in and do the audio visual for this room. The new, uh, new setup, and hopefully it will be a little bit more technically glitch-free when we get it in place and easier to operate for everybody in the, in the, in the building. And I'll also be able to, and if needed, attend or be able to, to work things, problems from remote on that thing. Um, I mean, really focused around that ERP project. Brien to get the GeoCom people online this week. So that was, that was good. Um, plenty of tickets. It's working. Going at it.
Um, Ms. Murray?
Hello? Yes, hi. Okay. Um, I just wanted to let you know that I did a comparison to the January fiscal year 20 revenue that was received, uh, through the January fiscal year 21, the revenue received through January 31st of both fiscal years. And we are neck and neck. Um, uh, it was 59.18% in fiscal year 20. And in fiscal year 21, it's 59.29%. So to me, that's good news. So, uh, and then of course we started with our collections and so that's gonna be a busy time. And soon we will be having our kickoff meeting with a venity. And, uh, that will be a pretty fast-paced implementation. So we, we have a lot going on in our shop and, but before I, uh, get off of the phone, I wanted to say congratulations to John Share. He is so deserving and we have a real asset in him.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Murray. Um, Barry Penn Hall.
I am here. Uh, I guess the most important thing to report on is, uh, our, uh, current budget draft. Uh, the superintendent presented a proposal last night to us or a draft to us last night. Budget of just over, uh, 20 million, 319,000, which is up about a little less than 330,000 from last year. Now, the good news is, um, the county share, which is always obviously a significant portion, about 9,752,000, is down, uh, just under $2,400 from last year. I, I've been on the school board eight years. I've never seen us, uh, bring a budget to you that asks for the same or less. Uh, and so I'm, I'm very pleased that, uh, that it looks like we're gonna be able to do that. Uh, there, there are a couple of reasons that's gonna be possible. Uh, one is about 374,000 extra dollars from sales tax revenue from the state. Uh, and also the, uh, uh, budget we think is gonna get passed in Richmond has a 2% teacher bonus that'll bring us about, uh, uh, just under $100,000. We're also expecting little or no increase to our health insurance. Um, and we're able to push some of our needs, uh, out of the budget into, uh, COVID relief funding. And, and I think all of that together has, is what makes it possible, uh, for us to, uh, to likely bring you a budget that, that asks for slightly less than last year. Uh, in terms of the highlights of that budget, we're, we're proposing a 3% across the board salary increase. Uh, and then in addition for our instructional assistants about, uh, which there are about 30, uh, who are tremendously underpaid. Uh, there's gonna be a $500 upward adjustment to their pay scale all the way across. And, and the lowest paid of those, um, are, are, you know, right at or right below $15,000. So we're, we're talking about people who, who are not, uh, paid. So we're, we're talking about people who, who are not uh paid uh what, what, what they're worth, so that's for sure. Um, we're saving uh, close to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars by eliminating two positions. One will be a reduction in force at the school board office and the other a retirement at the high school that will not be replaced. Uh, and, and with those basically administrative positions, we're gonna be able to fund uh three new positions that directly address student learning. Additional teacher waiver Liao, a Spanish teacher at the middle school and a special education uh teacher at the primary school. So that's, that's the sort of the highlights of our, of our basic budgets. I think it's also important, you, you'll probably be interested to know what we're doing with our fourth round of COVID relief funding. Which is obviously temporary funding, but significant funding for the next couple of years. Uh, we're uh going to uh establish uh two-year positions at each of our four schools to address the learning gaps that have been created by the pandemic. Uh, we're calling those student success coaches at uh the primary school and the elementary school and the middle school. Uh, and those will be working with what we call our tier-three students, those students who are, 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 are most uh struggling. And there'll be a graduation coach at the high school to work with those students who, again, as a result of, of COVID and the new ways we've had to deliver learning, uh, students who, who need, who need to catch up uh to be able to graduate. We hear a lot about how the, the pandemic and isolation has created um a, a great deal of stress for our students and greater uh social psychological needs. And we're gonna be trying, we're gonna be hiring a counselor or a social worker at the elementary level, again, out of that uh emergency COVID relief funding. And then also uh beefing up high school, uh, summer school, enhanced summer school. Uh, we're calling it uh three assistant principals will move to a twelve-month status to better, better support um summer programs. So uh, we're gonna be uh doing a lot of catching up over the next year or two for the learning losses that we've experienced this year. You know, despite our, our very best efforts. And then I wanted to say just a word about uh in-person education. Everybody's aware that the governor has put out a directive to all school systems to have an in-person um component uh by, uh, by the middle of March. We are already in compliance with that directive and, and have been throughout the year, except for those two weeks that, that uh we went fully virtual uh because of the, of the very bad situation locally right after the holiday. Uh, so, so we are already in compliance with what the governor is, is directing. Uh, you know, don't, don't misunderstand what he's suggesting. He's not suggesting by March fifteenth, we should all have full-time in-person school. And, and we will not be able to do that, though, though there's nothing, we want more than to be able to return to in-person education full-time. We won't be able to do that at least until the fall uh because we can't follow the mandated mitigation strategies having to do with social distancing until we have the, the primary school available to us. So uh, I hope no one misunderstands that the, that, that this directive from the governor is gonna mean any massive change in Madison County. We are already uh compliant with what he's asking for. There, there are school systems around the state that do not have any in-person uh education and we have uh always, except for those two weeks. And then finally, uh, uh, our employees have begun to get vaccinated. I don't have the latest number, but I know just immediately after we got word that our employees were uh eligible to sign up. Uh, we were approaching two hundred of, of our three hundred plus employees who had, who had requested and, and signed up for uh, for vaccines. Uh, so uh, uh, our, our employees are surely showing a, a willingness and understand that uh, uh, their being vaccinated is a, is a significant part of moving us toward uh being able to, to, to move back someday to full-time in-person education. A, a, any questions from uh anybody on the board supervisors?
If I have anything, Barry, I do want to make sure that everybody is very clear about this, which has never been seen before. Um, the county's request for the school budget is down twenty-three hundred ninety-nine dollars. Um, never seen this before. This is, this is very good, Barry. Anagram is doing, and Kena and the rest of our team doing just absolutely right.
Yeah. I, I asked her last night, when the first time she heard me say to her, I sure hope one day you'll bring us a budget that asks the county for the same or less from one year to the next. And she said I mentioned it when we interviewed her for the job, so uh, I've been, that's a theme I've been uh lifting up uh, uh, throughout her, throughout her tenure, so. Very excited that she.
Barry, sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, anybody else on there that has something to say? I think we've hit everybody almost in the room. Um, whole business, considerations of CARES Act's extension for Boys and Girls Club, Ms. Hoff?
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you. All the conversation at the last meeting on this uh issue was me. Was the Girls Club's leader of January twenty-two is still active and no firm decision made at the last meeting. I ask that um we do clear this up soon. We uh believe it twisted until August is not acceptable because of well, is not able to sustain the money or the board's budget, but we're not exactly able to um ask them to send it back for the contracts. Board itself after some of the considerations. So the idea is that this ought to be brought to the head if not, not in the next year or two.
Yes, sir. Um, and also I want to publicly go on record, I called uh Nan, I'm sorry to give Nan a hard time. If, if there's one person in Madison that doesn't deserve a hard time, it's Nan Copping. Um, that was undue. Uh, truly apologize. Recent facts, can I come out on this deal? Um, I would appreciate if the Boys and Girls Club, when they ask this, doesn't send board members and actually comes and talks about it in the future. Um, it would be appreciated. Um, and that's not just on this CARES thing. Um, I think that we need to do something and approve it and move on.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I, I, I've been privileged to some information that I didn't have last week. So I'm uh, I'm in favor of, of extending the, the timeline.
We all wanted to, we need to approve the.
So I missed that piece of the meeting, I guess?
Yeah, you didn't get here till that was over.
I've not, I wonder if I should be staying because I don't know what I missed.
It, it, I mean, I'm sure you read it, Kevin. I mean, essentially they've got, oh, what is it, thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars remaining from our CARES Act funding of a hundred and twenty-five thousand that they didn't spend. They've asked for an extension that is uh permissible at this point. Um, that goes on till, what's the date it goes to, Hoff? August thirty-first, yeah, there it is. Um, that's what we're granting the extension to utilize that money instead of them having to come back and write us a check for that remaining balance.
Yeah, okay.
And that'll continue, that'll allow them to continue doing services.
And, and not only, the information that I have gotten since, since last week, but then last night on the school board's uh meeting, it sounds like the summer school is gonna be a very robust summer school this year, this particular this year. And I think the Boys and Girls Club need to pay a, play a big part in that. Is that right, Nan?
Anagram called me this morning, um, emphasizing the positive stuff that the Boys and Girls Club does here locally. Um, and she would appreciate it if we would pass this as well, so. She comes, my opinion, but she comes with pretty tremendous amount of weight.
The, the Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we authorized an, an extension to the MOU for the Boys and Girls Club uh until August thirty-first of twenty-twenty-one.
Second?
Motion made in sec- uh, excuse me, motion made in second, further discussion? Here, none of the favors, signify, saying aye. Aye, opposed, same side. Thank you all. Um, um, so tell us about status of major county projects.
Um, I can go on, on this as long as you can, but I thought it'd be helpful for the board to uh, uh, glimpse at all these big projects for the to show you that we've got above all in the air. Just to reiterate this uh COVID-nineteen business, vaccination, uh, that's part of the focus. We try to at least bring more lined up in the next few months. The focus, the idea is that we're doing this and the unit is that we're, we're helping health front and hospitals deal with the surge. Um, the big hope is that after this initial test, that, that we transition to the hospitals, the doctors and the pharmacies getting the shots in terms of the North State operation. There's a lot of people being shocked right now. I think we're uh following the law and trying to get help from people that. Um, I just want to make sure everybody thought it and everybody has to say it, but John got uh just the three hundred and fifty doses. We vaccinated one hundred and seventeen uh people up there, which is uh, you know, I don't know what it is. And to those, to all those folks, all the nurses were used and nobody had to run the country in the way so that this gets engraved around at the same time. All of that, so that's especially direct to them. Um, our original project is going to be developed. They hope to be complete with the mainline construction, uh, early summer end, which is the roof and the furniture and getting things straight and all, all this. Uh, but uh, more well, the part of watching the school board deal with issues such as electrical, uh, the kitchen renovation is not part of the project, but now when you get into these things, there's a new building background and a kitchen. And so the idea was that maybe you gotta put a few things to uh, to fix on that. So that's a, a process. Um, the whole project puts name on it, is intended for empty unused contingency of about half a million dollars, all that's in flux. And certainly not something we can put in the bank, but um, it's good news for the project in total. On the other hand, we are working on a parking lot proposal to basically replace the primary school parking lot. Um, that costs a lot of money and probably had to look at some of the other school parking lots as well as the county parking lots around. So um, I'm, I'm, I'm just glad to buy us, uh, not gonna try to jam that into this summer, so it might be uh studied to a stage this in some form, a big project for summer. That's all that's left right now to do, uh, for, for discussion. Um, buying more than this public safety video project is, is probably very long. Uh, all the equipment is in design and uh, we're uh, dedication, I should say, so that's uh, in shock. Um, getting real close on getting all rights to the different power sites and uh, that's a, that's not a small accomplishment to the, the he's been through. Right, so you don't have, that's uh, the next project, I think, so. The next big thing in front of the board would be uh, probably especially used to that condition for the Google lift site. And so that's uh, it'll be very popular at that point. Brian tells me that uh, the demo for the uh, for the hand-held radios is, is Friday. And just to reiterate to everybody, uh, that gets a plant, uh, about half a million dollars of, kind of, on mine. Uh, the, the project, the, um, the effects of that on that, I'm going to tell you some, but that's uh, Brian is the, 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 the. Financial software project is uh, making some progress. Uh, we, we got contracts with most of the vendors signed, I think there's one forty is still outstanding, but uh, that's uh, then for the few that's off here. Most of the organizational work is underway, so they're trying to uh, get items established, uh, so series of people being, so, so. Um, we uh, have yet to tabulate uh, what everything's gonna cost this budget year versus next budget year and so forth. And we did that, uh, we should, but we, we wanted to get to that some concept budget for this next uh, budget year. And uh, thank the spirit to say that, you know, we don't manage all this, we need just a fair uh, talk about innovation theme, so. Taking progress on that. For the county administration center renovation project, um, that also is doing fairly well. Uh, all the demolitions inside the building is, is taking place. All the rough damage inside the building is taking place with the, with the frame and the canopy, that's fine, that's all good. Contractors for all requests is to receive, you've been paid at night and I'm sure all a lot of people, um, involved in the act and uh, their architecture is, are done on that very nicely. Checking down the structure and maybe we're, we're good to do, but we, uh, the program is to have these weekly Zoom meetings, we'll, we'll clear here on this app. Um, first reported that uh, IT and AV installation, the phone uh, contracts have been signed, so we're pretty good shit there. There's one left to be done and that's with the data from mine for this building, but that uh, we've got our great success and we, we have a, we have a time to wait out, we'll think of that soon. Uh, details being resolved right now include uh, the finished materials, there's this idea that colors and textures and material types and all this balance and affects the project to take the demand there. Once we get uh, forward pushes on that, it'll be uh, in this building to show folks here what they look like and I'm, I'm confident we'll have a good package. But we'll be checked up on by future applicants in the building. We have issues with, uh, there's Benson idea that maybe the registrar's office is very secure in terms of, of firing images or traditional cameras and all that. These are late-making issues uh, to, to resolve. A, a bigger one that uh, I guess is, uh, just recently, is, is, is about matching the colors in this room to those secretions, so.
Absolutely. Uh-huh, those are good. Go with Hops. Why are you talking so seriously?
Anticipating the problem and a strong recognition from the looking at, looking at, we probably see. We want this, this room all in, you know, it could be. So, the current uh, the cause of some delays in the firewood delivery and all this and scheduling movers, most people tend might be our move date. So we uh, potentially could be a mission uh, for a, uh, anticipated orbit because most we have to schedule both hearing from all that. I guess for uh, March, we, we have a, a case hearing in the space and if we have to have a case hearing, we so we'll uh, we'll still print that. Um, that should has uh, changed the finish date from March in seventeen, which is Saturday, so I can't access, but also the material build up to the, I don't know. Not officially approved yet. I'm coming to conclusion that we're gonna be moving uh, at least the folks that are, my Jack and me in this building, down to go in April. We need to, we've got accelerated this idea of furniture purchases, so ask the, everybody to start working, I think, indeed. Uh, so that might be a request of this year's budget, but it's gonna be next year's. Just get sure of that. Um, so that's what I had on uh, this whole budget. Did y'all want to chime in on this, but the program has forced it to be, uh, we was last week. Um, right now, I think you could sit there and a little bit of research, know that we're going from uh, for our county to benchmark. Those folks have done with their program authorities, so uh, that's uh, that's my, uh, I would suggest that today that the chairman might uh talk. Those folks have done with their program forces, and so that's, that's my, I would suggest that today that the chairman might talk, know a little bit about the time. We're pulling this one back from the board, because it's a serious, it's a program priority, but it's not priority, we don't have a timetable on some of that. Another big thing in front of the board right now is this idea of the special with the county, three counties on this state business. It was a number that the local government committee not agrees with the buildings in front of them, which threw everything back to the counties. So we had a meeting, set up the group of folks to talk about where we are, who wants what, and the next steps. This might take a moment for you to resolve, but this first meeting is more a kickoff meeting, if you know what I mean. So we'll figure it out. Still intending to meet with the rescue squad on working out the details of the MOU as this is adopted. There's always something that comes up, but the pattern has been getting out a few weeks on that. I'm trying to make a few adjustments in other counties to see what their facilities look like. And the focus right now is discussion of whatever facilities county began last time, we're going to include hopefully very in the future. So that, again, is a complicated process, and we'll be deploying them in a couple of weeks. For the county budget, most budget requests have been presented to the board. We have others that have seen the podium, the health department's school, we're being a number one fair thing out there. We, I guess staff needs to back all this request business into consistent flow, so you can see it and run that. For some of the accounts here before, the focus on operations requests, of course. Then we'll need to go to personnel in terms of positions, full time, additional, projected overtime, deep overtime, and all that stuff, and push rates. I think it's the county's board's preference to see the donation request is a break down, this issue seems to have to. And we have yet to really get a deal to, to understand the characteristics of this year's, of course, for your part, working on all those projects. And so a lot of, obviously we have to deal with what we get through that support, but we did have a lot of planning in the way in terms of parking lots and EMS though, and so much of this, all that, so this is more of a planning year than a decided, incidentally. So going forward, we'll try to package what we have with budget and stack that up on regular board meetings as we can. The goal is to present to the board with improving the budget. The second, we can watch each new position to have, we'll probably get it in April 13.
What else have you been doing with your free time, Hobbs? I mean, good lord.
Slay ride.
I'm telling you. No, it's, it's good to see this stuff way out of the process. Keep everybody going right now. Obviously got two or three things going on here. Anybody have any questions to talk on? I'm such a shame, so sadly, chairs are going to be going away. All right.
Got Mary Jane on the phone.
Ah, yes.
You ready?
Yeah, sure. You muted her? Oh, there you go.
So I've been, no, no one called on me. I, I've been on this call the whole time. I have to say that the audio for this meeting is, is somewhere between terrible and horrendous, but anyway. It's very, very hard to understand. I'm not going to go through a lot. There's two points or three things really I need to talk about. One is that when we went through the COVID, the CARES money, so I, I just did an analysis for Jack. There was a $10,000 order, purchase order from EMS that there was some confusion over between, between Noah and me. And it's still outstanding. After you reflect that purchase order, you've made commitments or you've, you've said that you want to give VASAP the $5,000 that we didn't give them in December, and there's still about $1,600 outstanding for the, on the town's request. We don't have enough money with that additional $10,000 to pay for all of those things. So my question to you is, how do you want me, there, there, one alternative is, is that we can, we can, there is some money in the capital budget that we could use to pay for a small portion of that ambulance to free up the dollars that we kind of promised other organizations, or we can just tell them there's no money left. It's up to you.
What's, what's 10K for?
The supplies. There, there were, okay, so there were supplies that were built into a cost of an ambulance, and then there was a separate order for the supplies again. And they were basically double counted, and we took them out of one place, but I actually didn't pick them up in another place. So it was a miscounting, basically.
It would seem like we've made commitments at this point. On, on something like the medical supply side, we could pull that from the capital budget and move on with.
For medical, and actually, I would not recommend using the medical, using the capital budget for medical supplies, because that's not a capital item. What I would recommend is using, for however much money we need to, to, you know, make our commitments, is to use it to pay for a portion of that $200,000 on the ambulance. It's not that much, you know, it's like five or.
Well, all right. So we're gonna, we're gonna pull some from capital to pay for the ambulance and offset and change the direction of where we're funding the 10K of medical supply, so it comes out of CARES Act, so.
Okay, and I, I, so I briefly want to talk about two other things. One is the, the vaccine hotline and clinic. So I, I wasn't really, I didn't understand this prior to yesterday, but all of the hotline workers that are working at the extension office are, are, I mean, Brad has hired them with the understanding that they will be paid through county payroll. They haven't been paid yet. So, and I have an estimate from him of what those costs will be. We actually need money to pay for that. I mean, you, do you have any, I guess we can take it out of contingency.
Yeah. How much money does Brad think this is going to cost him?
I think it's, I mean, I think the estimate through, for the initial three sessions is somewhere, I'm, I'm doing this from memory, somewhere around $16,000. That's just for his, his people. I, I understand that there will be some EMS people too involved. What I have recommended is to Noah is that the EMS, it's, it's a bucket question right now. You want all of those people in one bucket, even if EMS has to take money out of their budget and put it into that budget. The reason for that is, is because I think it's very likely that you will be able to find a funding source for that. You know, something will come up in the future, and it's to your advantage to start bucketing those costs now rather than having to go backwards and try to figure it out later on.
All right, everybody is nodding in agreement. One, we need to bucket this.
Right.
Horrible way to put it. And the other one is, hey, pay these people. This is vitally important. If we, we are doing something that it seems like a lot of places aren't, and we're getting it done, pay these people.
Okay. So there's one other thing that I wanted to bring up, which I brought up at the budget work session last week, which is this concept of this document that Tyler wants on ERP governance. And as it turns out, they, they are most concerned about it in the permitting area, and, and that, they're not planning on starting to work on that until May. But after looking at, through all of their documents, I, I think it, it's probably, you know, we don't have any structure beyond me right now. I mean, I've been designated the project manager, but we don't have any kind of oversight or executive structure over the entire ERP project. And I think it was probably a good idea to do that, so it's, it's.
Why are we, why are we still not utilizing the committee that we had set up? I mean, isn't that the oversight on the.
No, not exactly. I, I have, I, that isn't, that committee was set up to evaluate and select software. I, and, and I don't think you want, I, if I just, I mean, I think in some situations, you are going to want some processes more streamlined than that. I don't think, and, and I can tell you that CB Digital had made this recommendation as well, that, you know, you don't put every little project detail in front of a six-person committee, because it will, you know, it, it's not an efficient or effective way to run a very large project with a lot of different people involved. So I, I just want to put that out there. I may have some additional suggestions on how we do this, but I don't think, you know, for example, there, there are areas that I work on that really, some people on that committee don't really have any working knowledge of, and, and they're, and vice versa. So we want to, I, you know, I don't think we want every person, every, every single decision of the ERP project being vetted by five or six people.
All right, for this type of policy, which is what you're really looking for, why don't, why don't the committee that we already appointed for the other, the procurement side of this, work together to come up with a policy to sort this out and come back to us with a recommendation at our second meeting in February?
Right, I think that's a good idea. I just wanted to put that out there, that I think it's, after Tyler raised the issue, if you, if you start looking at, you know, some of their concerns, I, I think it's, it's good that we think about putting in, understanding what our oversight structure is going to be over this.
Let's, is everybody in agreement that we use the committee that we've already had in place with vested interest? And y'all come up with a policy, move up that work?
The committee could report what it did versus waiting for the board to approve, if that makes sense.
That work for everybody? Let's go with that and come to us on the 23rd, give us a quick update on it. Uh, AJ, anything else?
No, I mean, I'm just still, I'm working. I still have my two outstanding items on the FY22 budget are, of course, helping Noah put numbers with his EMS line items. Doing IT budget. I'm still working on trying to get, I should have January, good January numbers out to department heads. I'm hoping by tomorrow. And, and still trying, we have not actually scheduled, I have talked to both Laserfish and Avenity, but we have not scheduled those kickoff meetings yet. So I'm hoping to get that done soon. And that will depend largely on the weather. I am somewhat concerned about losing a day or two this week of time, so we'll see.
There is potential of that. Looks like maybe icy and snowy. Roger's doing a good job though. Let's, let's do it safe, but let's get some of these things implemented, and I apologize that we missed you earlier. You're labeled as caller 06. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. Anybody else? Roger. Any other new business? Anything, Hobbs? Yeah, please, go ahead.
Is aware, our new animal shelter manager recommended a change in the policy at the, down there. She wants to go to four-day weeks, but longer days.
Seems like longer hours on Friday and Saturday, and then what are the other ones, Monday and Tuesday? Kind of makes sense. I, I mean, good lord, and. No, that's a good one. All right, anybody got any questions on that? Anybody have any other information, correspondence? Public comment, public comment, public comment. Oh, yes, Mike.
But the historical marker at Shelby, Shelby Road and 231 has been destroyed. It's not there. It was, what makes me mad about that is that there was a lot of history of it on that marker of the United States Army. And so much Confederate States Army, but the United States Army, and it's, it probably won't be replaced. I don't know, I guess the sheriff knows about it, but it's, somebody looked like they took something to it and destroyed it.
It had a big metal sign? The one right there, the chip. Yeah, it's like, it's like, what do you mean, it took something, a car?
It's gone.
So somebody stole it. All right, go, keep going, keep going.
All right, that's one.
Oh, a wooden frame deal.
He just described where the, the tactical forces were coming up against Jack Shaw.
All right.
And it was very nicely done, probably, like I said, it probably won't be replaced. I solicit the board of supervisors to, as much as you can, because I get a thousand questions about this all the time, and it was demonstrated tonight. The communications tower at UNO, I know it's under lawsuit, man, shoes, I won't get into that, it'll be nice. But anyway, if you could keep the public somehow, I get asked, I was scraping snow the other day, and I couldn't get it scraped for people asking that question. What are they going to do? They, we really need a tower down there. Not only for, we need it to educate our kids.
As a marabou, no.
Okay. This will really suit well with Mr. Jackson. If CARES Act 2, if you get some money, and there's a threat of that, maybe we can do something with the Cribbysville School. We can either do something with it or tear it down. But just letting it sit there is, I, I haven't heard anything about that in a long time. And the last thing is, this gentleman, he's left, but he continues to criticize Hoover Park. Which when I go there, I guess y'all know what he's talking about, but I don't. So, I mean, maybe you should let it, you're going to ignore it.
Pretty, pretty nice out there.
Well, if you're going to ignore him, maybe you shouldn't let him talk.
No, we can't do that. We can't do that. Everybody gets to say whatever the heck they want to say. Thank you. The, the, I don't know about paving woods or anything about that, but the one, maybe we can talk to the historical society, Max Lacy, about the sign up there at Shelby, and see if that's something that maybe they can take on, or know who to contact to get it replaced. I mean, it is, it's pretty, it's going to be a burn.
Yeah, a lot of people stop there and, and look at that. That's right.
Now, who did it, Roger? You know, who, who made that thing to begin with? I thought you were asking. I was thinking you were asking Roger who ran into it. See Mike and Warren? Roger? Ah, that's a shame. Sean Gregg, you probably know as much about it as anybody. Where are we with this lawsuit, Roger? What do you can say publicly? There you go. We're going through the legal process. He's suing us again and again and again, and that's going real well for us. We understand we need to get that tower going. Yes, sir? Yeah, but his last lawsuit talked, he actually named the VZA, and the VZA isn't allowed to be sued, so that, really doing his homework. Good for him. Hobbs, you got anything on that? All right. Anything else? We all want to.
Second.
Let's wait a second, further discussion here and then on, favorite signature five, same eye, same time. Thank you all very much.